For those who do not know me, my name is Holly Hetzrep. I'm with Human Resources. So we're going to do a training on workplace violence, anti-harassment, in a very small test training. So in 2013, Columbia County developed a policy and program for workplace violence. A committee was formed at that time to implement measures to prevent any risks. This training is in compliance with Columbia County's workplace violence policy. This is an annual mandated training for all staff. Workplace violence is any threat, assault, or intimidation that happens in the workplace. Doesn't have to be where you hang your hat every day. Doesn't have to be where you sit at your desk. Many of us are traveling, we're on the road, we're in a car. Could be a parking lot, could be a non-county building or a different county building. It could be because of the noise from highway guys. If they're arguing, it's hot out, they've been outside all day in the heat. They're arguing back and forth, somebody flipped somebody's hat off. That is workplace violence. If you are performing a work-related duty and you are threatened, assaulted, or violated against, please know it is workplace violence. Doesn't have to be coworker to coworker, can be a customer, a client, personal relationship, anybody that you come in contact with while you're performing a work-related duty. We do ask that if you witness workplace violence that you please report it. I know you guys say all the time, if you see something, say something. But it's very important as far as proper investigation goes as well. We do not want to improperly reprimand somebody. Maybe just email yourself with a time or date stamp. And cell phones have all time and date stamps, just to keep a log. If you're comfortable de-escalating the situation, please do so. If not, and this deputy in your building, please feel free to contact them. Maybe pull them, if there are people arguing in the hallway, someone is threatening, maybe pull them into different rooms, so people are not gathering around, crowding, pointing fingers, blaming. It's all kindergarten rules, basically. You know, say you're sorry if you're the one who started it. We do ask that you just say you're sorry and be kind. We're all here for the same reason. Many people experience workplace violence and they're not aware that it's happening. Some people are just jerks. We work with jerks every day. Some people, it's just who they are. So we ask that if maybe you come in contact with somebody who's a little more angry than usual, has a lot more going on, and you're not able to de-escalate that, or if you just notice some significant changes, you could bring it to someone's attention. Maybe your supervisor, or if it is your supervisor, you could always bring it to the attention of Human Resources. The important thing is maybe de-escalate something before it happens. Any questions on that? Did I go too fast for anyone? My co-ordinator from the Human Resources is the EO officer. So there is also a complaint form that goes with the actual program and policy. Please feel free to fill that out at any time. Please know that all information brought into the HR office is confidential, whether it be walk-in, phone call, or an email. Or maybe something's happening and you trust a colleague enough to come in and discuss that situation with us. Maybe you're not coming into Hudson's. Please know that everything is confidential. We ask that you do have the most accurate information as possible. The next part of the training is anti-harassment and discrimination. This is a federal policy. It's not written by Columbia County, it's followed by Columbia County. It's a protection of a protected class. It's as clear-cut as it could get. It is a zero-tolerance policy. The most important thing and the most clear way to say it is to know your audience. Know who you can and can't say things to. We could be working together for 20 years, we're family friends, we talk about things all the time. When a new person comes in, they're sitting three seats down, our conversation is affecting them, and they are feeling offended and discriminated against. Please know that jokingly to you or to a friend or coworker, it may not be taken in the same form as with someone else. Also, emails being forwarded, you could email it to somebody, they could forward it to somebody else. That could be taken as a manner of being discriminated or offended against. If you don't feel that way, it doesn't mean somebody else is not feeling that way. So this is a written reminder of how serious that anti-discrimination harassment is. There is also a new section in this policy that has been updated, which is sexual harassment. There are some things added to that. Some examples are would be patting, like you walk by and you pat somebody. Somebody does not want to be touched, we ask that you do not touch them. That is, that can be a sexual harassment. Any unwanted direct contact or indirect contact. The same thing at school, like passing notes. If I, you know, it could be third party, that could also be discrimi-- that could be harassment. We do not want to be violent, it's a sexual manner that they are feeling offended against. Leering, if you're leering at somebody, you're staring at them too long, you're feeling uncomfortable, that is also sexual harassment. It's a zero-tolerance policy. It does happen more often than people think it does, so we do ask that you pay attention. If you're uncomfortable, please bring it to someone's attention. Again, if you're comfortable, please feel free, we don't ask for confrontations. But if you're comfortable and confident, say, you know, can you back off? Can you leave me alone? I'm not comfortable. We ask that you please do that. Again, you could maybe write a log if you're witnessing it, or if someone does come up to you and they tell you that they are hearing this happening, please bring it to someone's attention. This policy is very serious, and Michael is also the EO officer for that. So please feel free to contact her or contact our office. In the back of your packet is the actual form that has been created for the candidates for complaint form. There's also an acknowledgement attached to that. So at the end of this, you guys can sign both of those. That is a written reminder of how serious this policy is and how there are, in every policy, there has to be an investigation. We let people know that if maybe something is happening to you and you don't want, you don't want to start anything, but you say to them, you know, "I don't want to say anything. I don't want to start anything, I just want you to know that this is happening." Please know that your supervisors are obligated at that time to take that information and protect you. Columbia County does demand safety at work, so we take everything very seriously. The one thing that we do not want is just let it keep happening. Any questions? Did I go too fast for anyone?
Perfect.
Okay, so the next training is very short. It's TESH, which is Public Employee Safety and Health. So this is the office version of hazardous communications and right to know. Hazardous communications is OSHA-regulated, which means that us as employers, we are mandated to provide you with materials of any chemicals that you're coming in contact with. And then with right to know, it's your right as an employee to know what chemicals are being used around you. For the office, it's very common with like shredder lubricant oil, or it could just be toners for the computer, toners for your printers, or it could even be hand sanitizer that are near the time clocks. Everything that the county orders, we get a safety data sheet on that. So everything that has a chemical in it, we have a binder with a master binder here, and then one in each county building. So everything that we order is in there. So if you come in contact with something, please know that you can reach out to us here 401, or to the building that you're in, to see if you have any reaction, or what to do, or what type of, what type of reaction you should be having or should not be having with that chemical. Many of you have seen around here, we have them a lot, they have posters that you have a right to know. Those are also for hazardous communications and right to know. So the most important thing is know that if you do come in contact with something, you're not sure what it is, even if you're in a different county building, there is a way we can, we can find out what industry you came in contact with and how to prevent it from becoming an allergic reaction. Or if you are having a reaction, what's to happen in case of emergency. Any questions? Okay. That's it. So if that, yes?
How often do you, I guess, what classes of employees get these trainings? And how often do people get retrained?
They're trained once a year, every year annually, and every county employee is mandated to have these trainings.
Like part-time and full-time?
Correct. Part-DM and part-time and full-time employees receive them. Any other questions? Give them to walk in the door. Kelly's going around with the sign sheet. Does everybody have your passport and sign? Mr. Ben Menudo does not. Did everybody sign a sign? There are two acknowledgements on the back of the first packet, so you can just pass them to whatever I am closest to you, and I can collect them. Those are acknowledging that you have received this training.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's right at the very end. There's two, one has the county, right that one, and the one right in front of it.
You want both?
Both of them. One is for workplace violence and one is for anti-harassment. Yes, you just signed these two? This one does not have one, that's just for your. Oh, and your.
Ready, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Does all supervisors have a copy of the audited financial statement for 2017?
Yes.
I'm going to bring up Matt Vanderbeck, who is our partner. And he's going to go over our audited statement for 2017. I'll be pleased again that, for I believe, the fifth year in a row. Okay. He snuck behind me back there. For fifty in a row, the county has had a surplus in its general fund of just over 1.4 million. And I'm going to let Matt explain it away, how the audit transpired this year, what was new, how it went, what the findings were, what any audited adjustments there were, there were any. And I'm going to give it to him. Go ahead, Matt.
Ron, thank you. So I'm going to refer to the copy that you do have in front of you instead of using the overhead, so I'll reference some pages for you to go to. So in the beginning of the document, you'll see there's an audit report with our letterhead on it. And basically, what I want to say about that is that that report is consistent with what you normally would receive. It's an unmodified report, other than we have the one item that we described related to the tobacco asset security corporation, which is similar to what we've done in the past. So that's pretty much going to be there for perpetual, basically, until an accounting standard changes. So that is the report that you would expect to receive. Also, we did issue a compliance audit, which is separate than this document, that basically, if you're interested in the details of that report, I would recommend you, you know, get that from the treasurer's office or the comptroller's office. But we do that in conjunction with the financial statement audit. Because of the federal money that you receive, you're required to issue this compliance audit by September 30th. And as Ron was indicating, everything was filed on time. I met with the finance and audit committee prior to issuing the statements in September. So that's where we dove into the details more, and went through each of the documents, and I was able to field questions. So today, I'm really trying to hit some of the highlights of your audit for 2017. What I will say, too, this year is, as far as how the audit went, I thought the audit went well. We had a clean audit. As Ron indicated just a few minutes ago, there were no audit adjustments, which is a major thing for the size of this organization and the county. So that's an indicator of how clean your books are and the job that the comptroller and treasurer's office does. So we didn't have any adjustments. This year also was the first time that the comptroller's office was, in particular, Cassie, with Ron's oversight, was able to prepare these financial statements. So when you look at those financial statements, where we would have prepared the majority of the document last year in '16, and so would of your prior auditors, this year, that was produced by the comptroller's office. And we audited that and worked with them to make sure that everything was tied out and so forth. So I would say that's a milestone for the county, and my expectation is you'll be able to continue to do that. And I think you're even planning on taking that in the next step, next year, with the presentation of the financial statements. We also provided the finance and audit committee with a management letter. I mean, the main thing I want to point out there is that your, the big thing you hear in the, out there now is your IT policies, procedures, cybersecurity. That is something I know the county takes seriously and is working on, trying to formalize as much of that documentation that you can to make sure there's a clear policy as far as what the county is doing. I still recommend that you take what you're doing and continue to get it on paper, and make sure that your assessment of any of the risks related to IT are clearly understood and you're addressing them. So it was just more of a comment that I'm making to most organizations at this point, that you should really formalize that. So that's, that's at a higher level of how the audit went. As far as the results for the year, I'm going to refer to the page number 19 in the document that you have. Focus first will be on just basically how you run the county and looking at the governmental, the changes in the governmental funds. And as Ron indicated, when you look at the general fund for 2017, at the bottom of the page in the first column, you'll see that you have an increase in fund balance of $1.4 And that is based on revenue of $116.3 million. When you look at the total for the year, that includes also capital projects and your non-major funds, you'll see there's, the results were, for the capital projects fund, negative $1.1 million, and for the non-major funds, negative $1.7. So when you add them all together, you have a negative $950,000. But what I will say is, when you look at the capital projects funds, you can see you spent $4.5 million in capital project costs, and then you only raised through a bond of $1.1 million. So generally, the negative amount arises due to timing and when you're going to bond the financing to pay for these capital projects. So that, when you look at that negative number, that shouldn't really alert you as it's an issue, it's more of a timing thing. And then on your non-major funds, the majority of that change is due to the county road funds, which had a $1.5 million reduction in fund balance, which they had $2.5 million in capital outlay, and also you had $831,000 in debt service that you paid. So when you take that together, it's really causing that to be a negative number. I assume, again, that that will have an offset in the future, as the majority of the cost being, you have these capital outlay costs that you're going to plan on funding in a future time period.
A good thing I'll say about that is that PJ and I have cash on hand to cover these cash flow issues. We spend on our capital projects ahead of time out of our cash, and then we reimburse ourselves back with our bonding, either to the bank or the serial bonds, usually the following year or within a 12-month period.
All right, so that's why you see those negative amounts, due to that timing mechanism of funding. When you look at the previous page, page 17, this will show you the assets. So for the general fund, you had $38.1 million in assets. And again, going to what Ron is talking about, you had $11.1 million in cash, when you look at the top of the page there. If you, you don't see the prior year amounts here, because the presentation is a single year, but if you did see the previous year, you had $10.5 million in cash, so your cash is now at $11.1. Your assets last year were $40.5 million, they're now $38 million, so there is a decrease in that. But part of that has to do with the fact that you had, if you recall, last year, most of you heard me talking about, the Pine Haven timing of collecting the receivable money that you had due to the sale. That money has come in, and then you ultimately had paid down some of, your liabilities went from $19.8 million to $16.2 million. So you reduced your liabilities. Your fund balance at the bottom says $18.5 million, which is, last year was the $17 million, you had the $1.4 million of an increase, this year gives you $18 million, and $11.2 million of that is unassigned, so it's not been designated for any particular purpose at this point in time.
I'm just going to pop up this here, because Supervisor Keating wanted to show this going back about eight, 10 years ago, see where our cash position was to where we went. And we went back to 2010. We could have had a hefty cash balance back then, but what happened over the years is we pretty much depleted that cash, and you can see how low it was. And that was a combination of a couple of things, that we're using cash, all right, to balance our budgets. We're taking $3 million to $1.8, $1.8 million to balance a budget. Plus, we had some bad years where we had some significant deficits. So you couple those together, and 13, 14, we were hurting for cash. And as you see, gradually, as things got better, we tightened things back up. There's that $10.5 million we had last year, and now we're up over $11 million. Now you see that's improvement over the years, okay, as we go forward. And one thing I will always tell you, and I'm sure Matt will tell you, as you have surpluses over the years, eventually, surpluses turn into cash. They'll happen. That's what generally what happens when you have surpluses. So you can see the improvement both in cash and in fund balance over the years. And that's attributed to a couple of things, okay? Number one, structurally balanced budgets that we put together over the past few years. Nothing is one shots or one-sided or anything like that. They're structurally balanced. We have good budget committees, we have a good budget team and so forth. And that helps when you get a good structurally balanced budget. We have good policies and procedures that we put in place over the years, and most of all, we follow them and stick to them, as proven by the state comptroller's audit last year, when they came in and they found absolutely nothing with that. So you couple those things together, a good team, good professional team, with all of us, all your supervisors, so forth, good things happen.
Ron here.
Yes.
Of the $11 million, $4.5 is restricted. What is, what makes up that?
You have tax stabilization of $2.5 million. You have the insurance reserve, Rob, which is about $1.5 million for health insurance, that's the majority of it. There's some small for encumbrances and small things like that, but those are the two major things.
If you look at page 17, there'll be designations of the fund balance, and the restricted fund balance, and some of these other, basically what Ron's laying out for you is broken out down below.
Thank you.
Are we at a point now where we're satisfied with cash reserves? I know when I started here, we were at like $3 million, $10 million was the goal, now we're at $11 million.
PJ's never satisfied.
Let PJ answer that question.
Let me just, yeah, let me just say that in December of last year, in our operating account, we finished with $11 million at the end of the year. Okay, that's total. You'll see the cash and cash equivalents was at six, only because of the end of the year, sales tax, and so on and so forth. But around December 15th last year, PJ had a fund, an operating fund balance of $300,000. Now, our payroll's $900,000 a week, so $11 million isn't out of the question, but that's one of the reasons we developed the fund balance policy, if you remember, okay? Where the minimum was $11 million, we had a maximum, all right? We're at that minimum, all right? So it's, we need that amount of money to operate efficiently.
This squeaks as by cashualize is what you're saying?
Yeah.
So it's the floor.
We're at a minimum.
It's the floor.
We're at the minimum, but remember, like Ron said, where we were. I know when we came in, 2012, we had a general fund, we were at a loss between $4 and $5 million, okay? So we've come a long way. But again, like Rod said, you know, it's a combination of everybody working together, the committees, the point ones, the asking the hard questions, and it's a combination of everything.
Okay, so then, just to carry, or to finish up with the activity for the general fund and thinking about the operations for 2017, back in the financial statements, go back to page 63, is where you can find the budget versus what the results were. And you can see here where, you know, those differences that gave rise to the $1.4 million and the increase in fund balance. There's a couple of things that will stand out for you. You'll see, when you look at sales and use tax, you generated $3.4 million more than you had budgeted. So that was the major difference that contributed more revenue to the county this year. And then when you look at the expenditures, you'll see that you had higher costs from an employee, from employee benefit standpoint, of about $2 million. The other thing that you'll, you'll see, just you're not budgeting it, is the debt, the debt service. Partly, I think, because over the last couple of years, too, is where that is being presented in the, in the funds. So I believe where it is now is the appropriate place. Sometimes it's, depends on where the funds are used to pay that back, and it's been, I believe, in the capital fund.
In the capital fund.
Capital fund.
So we moved it back where it belongs.
Right, so that's more of a, just a recategorization of it, more than an additional outflow to the county.
Correct.
Ron, could you explain what's going to happen with the sales tax next year? I mean, with the internet usage? I don't know if all the supervisors know that we might get even more from, in sales tax, from, from the internet, because the state has changed the way they look at things.
We just, we don't know what the number's going to be, what they're projecting. And I've heard anywhere from $50 billion, or something like that with your sales tax. This is 2015 sales tax total state, okay? So this is total state sales tax. And what I've done is I've broken it up of what our share is, and our share is Columbia County in the yellow. So if I move it over, okay, we average 0.13% in the entire sales tax in the county. That's our share.
In the state.
From the state, okay? Then I can do a little mathematic formula. If this internet sales were to generate, I don't know, I've heard up to $5 billion. I'm going to key that in there. What would that equate to sales tax cash in the county? $629,000, okay? That's what that would equate to. That would be our share of that six, of that $500 billion. But we're not budgeting for it.
Right, but they've already put it in place.
Yeah, they already put it in place. It's going to happen, okay? The first of the year, I just don't know a number. Nobody knows what that number is.
But that'll be broken up to the towns, or?
Oh, yeah, you guys have got, that would be.
That would be the county's.
County's share, and then 30% of that would go to you guys.
Right.
Okay, all right, of that, too. You would all benefit.
Some of these agencies or companies are already reporting that, so.
Yeah, if you go on amazon.com.
That's one of the reasons that it may be up now.
They're already asking if you don't give them a mailing address, and they're taking 8% sales tax out of New York State.
Right. I'm sure it will help.
So basically, you know, we're doing extremely well on sales tax, so we're probably going to do even better next year.
All right, so basically, that, those are the highlights I wanted to go through with you. So if there are any other questions, that's it for the presentation. Yes?
Ron, PJ, I think you guys did a great job, and your team you got behind you is, was very helpful. I sat in that audit and stuff, and everyone really knew what they were talking about, and they were bringing up information right away, so you guys really did a great job. Thank you. PJ, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll call the board of supervisors, meeting the order. I'd like everyone to rise to the moment of silent prayer. In your prayers, remember the victims, Harry County accident. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to request the clerk, call the roll.
Bassin.
Here.
Whitegill.
Here.
Bratton.
Here.
Ben Menudo.
Here.
Satch.
Here.
Keating.
Here.
Neer.
Here.
Law.
Here.
Bryler.
Good evening.
Eldridge.
Here.
Derry.
Here.
Chip Cassidy.
Here.
Legonia.
Here.
Sterling.
Here.
Mia.
Here.
Chamedis.
Here.
Lesman.
Here.
Spiller.
Here.
Doessey.
Here.
Tia.
Here.
Moron.
Here.
Knack.
Here.
Skoda.
Here.
We have all attendance, 35, 35.
Thank you. I need a motion to pay the bills, accept the treasurer's report, and file minutes within the clerk's office.
More recently, in April of two thousand seventeen, HPD moved from inadequate facility to a new building on Union Street. The relocation required a lot of planning and coordination between our two agencies. Because of Director Lopez's efforts, HPD acquired communication desk platforms, server rack systems for our data room, and upgraded mobile radios. The finished product is a modern police facility equipped with professional communications and radio technology. We fully understand the crucial role Columbia 911 plays in serving as a lifeline for our citizens' safety and our officers' safety. Our citizens expect services to be delivered quickly and efficiently. Director Lopez has provided this professional standard. Our police department and the citizens of Hudson owe him the debt of gratitude. And I'd like to give him a little gift right now. It's a little, it's not the normal plaque that you would receive, so I'm sorry about that, Ron, but it's a genuine scrimshaw, whale ivory little keep safe box with a little inscription. And I imagine now that we know that you're a whale ivory, you're going to visit from the D E C. [laughter]
Rob, I'd like you to stay up here if you could, and I'd like to have Supervisors Benvenuto and Lo come up, as well as Dispatchers Frank Martin and Dana Petty.
It is my honor to read this letter of commendation. This letter's from the Chatham Fire Department, Ocean Fire Company number one, S.W. Smith Hook and Ladder, dated August 20, 2018. Director Robert Lopez. Columbia County 911. In recognition of outstanding performance of Dispatchers Martin and Perry. Dear Director Lopez. Commencing at approximately nineteen hundred and thirty hours on August seventeen, 2018, North Central Columbia County became ground zero for a series of tremendous thunderstorms and torrential downpours. Specifically, the Ghent, Chatham, Red Rock, and Canaan Fire Districts became inundated with calls for emergencies. The storms lasted nearly five hours, leaving a swath of damage that resulted, that required 911 and emergency responders to handle an exorbitant amount of calls through noon on August eighteen. It was reported that Chatham received over six inches of rain that resulted in flooded roads, downed trees, and power lines, flooded basements, and power outages. One such power outage resulted in an emergency carbon monoxide call where a couple were nearly overcome by this poisonous gas. Both dispatchers maintained amazing composure and professionalism that we in the field have accounted, accustomed to your office. You should be proud of their work and the work of all the dispatchers on a daily basis. There's no question that their assistance played a vital role in bringing these dangerous situations to a successful resolution without further injury to any other victims or responders. Dispatchers Frank Martin and Dana Perry are recognized by the Chatham Fire Department, Village of Chatham, and Columbia County for their outstanding work on this twentieth day of August 2018, and should be commended for their exemplary service to the people of Columbia County. Signed, Chatham Fire Department Chiefs, Paul Wrightout, John Howell, and Eric Fons.
So I have a certificate of recognition presented to Frank Martin for his professionalism, composure, and outstanding work during the August twentieth, two thousand eighteen storm. Certificate of recognition presented to Dana Petty. And a certificate of recognition presented to the entire Columbia County 911 Department.
I'd like to have Kippe Whitegout, who's Chair of the County Government Committee, come up here with Holly Tanner, our county clerk.
Well, Holly, I'm going to read this first, and then I have some personal comments.
Oh, boy. Remember the training that we just had? Got my package.
So I have a certificate of recognition presented to Holly C. Tanner for receiving a lifetime achievement award from the New York State Association of County Clerks for her sixteen-plus years of exemplary service as our county clerk. Matthew Morrell, Chairman, Columbia County Board of Supervisors, presented on October tenth, two thousand eighteen. So as everybody knows, and I think all the supervisors know, she's been there for sixteen years, and I think probably most supervisors in this room, when you need something from Holly, whether it's nights, weekends, whatever, she did it for us. Or she couldn't find it, she would get it for us, that's for darn sure. I got to say, of all the years that I've known you, I've called her for, whether it's personal things, or for the town, or something, anytime we gave her a call, she'd get back to us, or she'd find the answer to the question. So for sixteen years, you have done this service for the Columbia County people of Columbia County, and we sure appreciate it. The bad part of this is, you've got to understand, she has taken some time away from her kids and her husband to do some of this. So on the bad side, so I'd like to give her a big round of applause, we appreciate you, man. Thank you.
I know, I know.
Congratulations. I'd like to now request the clerk read the resolutions.
Okay, resolution three sixty-four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Grattan, three sixty-five by Knott, three sixty-six by Benvenuto, three sixty-seven by Benvenuto, three sixty-eight by Keavney, three sixty-nine by Mia, three seventy by Musman, three seventy-one by Scolera, three seventy-two by Benvenuto, three seventy-three by Supervisor Nair.
Supervisor Nair.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second to motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put in a resolution three sixty-seven, I want to abstain that one.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution three seventy-four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Keavney, three seventy-five by Mia, three seventy-six by Benvenuto, three seventy-seven by Scolera, three seventy-eight by Grattan, three seventy-nine by Knott, three eighty by Benvenuto, three eighty-one by Nair, three eighty-two by Keavney, three eighty-three by Supervisor Mia.
Supervisor Mia.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer this resolution for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution three eighty-four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Musman, three eighty-five by Scolera, three eighty-six by Nair, three eighty-seven by Keavney, three eighty-eight by Mia, three eighty-nine by Musman, three ninety by Scolera, three ninety-one by Grattan, three ninety-two by Knott, three ninety-three by Supervisor Benvenuto.
Supervisor Benvenuto.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second to motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution four oh four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Mia. Resolution four oh five has been pulled. Resolution four oh six of two thousand eighteen by Scolera. Resolution four oh seven by Supervisor Grattan, and four oh eight has also been pulled, so we'll go back to four oh seven with Supervisor Grattan.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second to motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution four oh four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Mia. Resolution four oh five has been pulled. Resolution four oh six of two thousand eighteen by Scolera. Resolution four oh seven by Supervisor Grattan, and four oh eight has also been pulled, so we'll go back to four oh seven with Supervisor Grattan.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second to motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution three eighty-four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Musman, three eighty-five by Scolera, three eighty-six by Nair, three eighty-seven by Keavney, three eighty-eight by Mia, three eighty-nine by Musman, three ninety by Scolera, three ninety-one by Grattan, three ninety-two by Knott, three ninety-three by Supervisor Benvenuto.
Supervisor Benvenuto.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second to motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution three ninety-four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Keavney, three ninety-five by Keavney, three ninety-six by Mia, three ninety-seven by Musman, three ninety-eight by Scolera, three ninety-nine by Grattan, four hundred by Knott, four oh one by Benvenuto, four oh two by Nair, four oh three by Supervisor Keavney.
Supervisor Keavney.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second to motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution four oh four of two thousand eighteen by Supervisor Mia. Resolution four oh five has been pulled. Resolution four oh six of two thousand eighteen by Scolera. Resolution four oh seven by Supervisor Grattan, and four oh eight has also been pulled, so we'll go back to four oh seven with Supervisor Grattan.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second to motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I will say that I think it was appropriate that canned goods and meats, the resolution was offered by Mr. Keavney.
One of my favorites.
Do any supervisors have any other business to bring to the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to announce, for the benefit of everyone, that last night at the Board of Health meeting, it was announced that the county had received a grant of seventy thousand dollars towards, working towards providing additional services to combat opioid addiction, and the Health Department decided to use this money to train what's, what's called recovery coaches, and these are individuals who are trained to assist other people who have manifested symptoms of opioid dependency, whether it's being admitted to a hospital or being called, responded. A team, for example, a mobile crisis assessment team has gone to them, and after the crisis has passed, is, is these individuals who are recovery coaches would assist people in obtaining services, or giving them the helping hand they need along the path to recovery. This is very, is a very important, and it's a very meaningful grant, because it's not just a one-shot thing where the grant is just expended. What it does is, is it trains people, who in turn will train other people and will reach out and help people, so it'll be a continuing thing, a continuing thing, and also is, is they'll be able to share their wisdom, what they learn in the process. Currently, it started last week up at Columbia Memorial Hospital, dealing specifically with people who are brought in for a treatment for an opioid overdose or an opioid-related problem, so it's a very, very worthy thing. I think the participants of it are to be commended for helping out and working on this. Thank you very much.
Any other supervisor sitting here? Supervisor Whitegout?
I don't know where you found it, but I got to thank you for it, but for some reason, I have a taller chair tonight, and I appreciate that. Well, I know where I found it, because that one, and I thought it was off the floor. Supervisor Statz?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say on heels of the audit results that we just had, the good news that we're finding, finding the ability to cash balance up to a minimum what we'd like to maintain, you know, revenues are up this year, no longer have a client given burden, I think probably by the end of this year, we'll probably be putting another surplus of a million or two in the bank. I would hope at this point you will take a look at the budget really hard this year and try not to include an increase in the taxes to the county taxpayers this year, even though we're allowed to go two percent, I'd really like to see a year that we do not have to raise taxes for a change, and I'd really hope you could consider that in your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other supervisors? Last meeting, I made an appointment of, to an occupancy committee, review committee, to look at that occupancy's in the county, and I will say that I was remiss in not including our county treasurer and our county comptroller. And Cooper came to me the very next morning and said, "We need the county comptroller and the county treasurer on this committee." So they already have gotten homework assignments from the committee and, and are working on them, but I want to officially put both PJ Keeler and Ron Capenera on the occupancy committee, because we need the, the financial perspective, so that would be my appointment. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.